Good evening. First order is open meeting to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board on any topic they do saw at this time or another chance later in the meeting?
I'm good.
You gonna hold on? Okay. Okay, minutes of the previous meeting on October 1st. Are there any errors or omissions noted?
I'll make a motion, make it up to minutes. Second.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Minutes are approved. Bills. Our son, are there any additions?
We have, we have three additions this evening. The first one is business card in the amount of $2,095.13. That's NICOM expenses, expenses for hydrants, meters, and valves, training, line worker safety school expenses, and advertising for the most in the coast. Our second one is Excelis, the amount of $34,747.65, a monthly bill, and simply prescriptions, $5,581. There's one deletion, magazine subscription service agency, amount of $308.47.
That was a deletion?
Yeah, that's a library bill.
Okay, I have one question about the KAS under library capital projects. What was that about? Probably Brian would know that. $1,155, it looks like something to the building. Was that, was that part of the?
I think that's the asbestos.
Part of the asbestos? Because I thought that was like-
Fresh air services branded to conduct background air monitoring in the Dodgemore library basement during asbestos removal.
Okay, that's separate from the $11,000 or whatever it's going across for them?
Yep.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
I think a motion would pay-
Just a minute, please. Another question. I didn't get these bills until four o'clock this afternoon. Under Recreation Department, we purchased some gutters, some caps, and some siding for this building. I knew this project was going on, but I didn't know there was a real urgency to get this, and I would like an explanation why we purchased $1,233 worth of material and we paid $2,808 in freight.
Who are you asking?
I'm asking who ordered the stuff. Who ordered this? Who paid this astronomical, who approved this astronomical freight?
It's a sole source vendor. That's the only one.
Our son purchased one for $3,000 worth of freight on $1,200 worth of tin on something that didn't need to come up here this fall. It could have been, it could have been put on a special, another order, but it can come up here. We could have sent, we could have sent one of our guys for a thousand bucks down there with a truck and a trailer to pick this up.
To Tennessee?
That's right. I bet money on it.
No, I don't think so.
What I'm saying is, is we don't have that kind of money to blow, Mr. Mayor, and I'm wanting to know why the urgency was that we had to have it?
The urgency was, we want to get those gutters put up this fall so they're painted, so that the color matches the rest of the building, so it doesn't fade over the winter. We put them up next year and have to repaint all the gutters all the way around the building. That's why we ordered them.
So, under your spending plan, where you want to save the taxpayers' money, and you lower the taxes this year, you approve of $3,000 for $1,200 item. I fought, fought hard to reduce our budget in almost every department.
You have, you have made decisions that have cost us tens of thousands of dollars in the last year. If you want to showboat around this thing, you can go ahead and do it.
So, you put your blessing on this?
I'm, I was surprised that it was $2,800. I didn't see the freight bill. I said, "Go ahead and order the metal for $1,100," or whatever it was, and we added a lot of extra metal to it because it wouldn't cost any more in the freight. And I didn't think it'd be that much freight.
So, you signed this, you signed this purchase order?
I didn't sign the purchase.
Who signed the purchase order?
I don't know.
You don't know? Well, there's only two people that got to sign it on our side.
Well, then, why are you asking? If you know who did it? I don't know. I didn't sign it. I asked if I signed it, I didn't sign it.
I don't know specifically who signed it. I don't want this bill approved, that one bill. I want that abstract taken out of that bill. I want some more discussion on it.
Well, you can discuss it all you want, but you're still going to pay the bill because we've received the merchandise. What are you going to do, spend $2,800 to send it back?
If we, if we accept it, then we're on the hook for it.
It's already here.
Because when you sign that, I haven't seen the merchandise. Right. If you want to check it back, no problem. You can pay the freight back, so.
I'll, I'll bring this up. I'll bring this up under, under my subject. I want to brief, I want to brief the executive session with just the board and mayor.
We're not going to have that. We've got a regular, we've got a regular executive session tonight. It's going to be quite lengthy.
Right, and I'm asking for an executive session to talk about this.
Sure, you can talk about it.
Okay. That's all I have for the bill.
Okay. I make a motion, pay the bills. That's correct.
Second.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. On that one bill. And I want that noted, that I'm saying no on that one bill. Not on the whole lot of bills. Thank you. All right. Money in this village like that.
Like you have a clue about how the money's spent in this village, Tom. I'm getting really tired of this. Showboating at every meeting like this, showing off that you think you know something about the money.
You think that's what it is, Mr. Mayor?
I know that's exactly what it is.
Well, that's good. A lot of the folks out there can see this.
Yeah, well, they can, because that's the reason why you're doing it. All right, correspondence. Do you have correspondence?
We don't have any this evening.
Okay, there's no correspondence. Report from the mayor's trustees. Okay. I have a resolution for the proxy, for the IEP. I was going to go there myself, and I've decided not to go because I looked at the agenda and I talked to some people on the phone, and I don't think it's worth me going on this trip. Well, that's going to save about 500 bucks anyway. So, we have to do this, we have our vote by proxy. So, where is the annual meeting of the IEP has been called October 23rd, 2018, to be held at the Embassy Suites Syracuse. Where is, in accordance to the bylaws, IEP, each member system may cast one vote on each transaction properly brought before this meeting. Now, there it resolves that the IEP management committee be and is hereby designated as the accredited delegate of the Village of Rousas Point, New York. Okay, I have to have a roll call on this.
Before the roll call, mayor, I have a question. When you fired on to the, what would be discussed during the meeting, what information did they give back to you?
They said it was basically going to be this, and they were going to go over the budget finances for the year, and they give you some handouts which they'll mail to us of what each town has paid in IEP money coming in and how much they've given back for last year, or for last, it won't be right up to date. I went to it last year, and it was, it was informative, but I wanted to meet with a representative there that isn't going to be at this meeting, so it wasn't a lot of point for me to go.
Is there an IEP rep there?
Well, they have a new one. That's what's up in the air.
Thank you.
Okay. You ready? Roll call, vote. Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dard?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor votes aye. Okay, next thing I have is sexual harassment policy. We have one that, that meets the minimal standards for this, as dictated by the state of New York. They have since come out with one that's apparently clarified better than the one that we have, and also meets their standards because it's theirs. And so, I'd like to bring the policy up to date by adopting this one. Now, does anyone have any questions on this? Any comment?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we accept the new sexual harassment policy, as written by the state.
Okay, have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Now, we have some talk, it was supposed to be a contract for, for the code enforcement officer. What we've gotten, I've talked to Larry Barkley, the town supervisor, and what we have is, Mike Tatro is available four hours a week on Wednesdays in the morning. Now, I was, I thought at the time that that wouldn't be enough time, and he's come to that conclusion on his own. Previously, when he was our code enforcement officer, he spent about 10 hours a week here. So, I, I told him today, I talked to him, and I said, "Well, we could make other arrangements for him to not be required to attend, like zoning and planning unless they needed him for a specific issue." Because he used to come to all of them. When I was on the planning board, he was there every month, and board meetings and stuff like that, unless we specifically need him. And also, what I'd like to do, since this will cost, I believe, about $7,000 a year, which is what we negotiated with the town, and we have $20,000 a year budgeted for this, what I'd like to do is hire or appoint a second assistant code officer for probably about, I'd have to negotiate, but probably about $3,500, $4,000 a year is what I'm thinking, around in that area, and get someone to do the outside work of the code enforcement officer, like checking on, on buildings for debris and garbage, I guess nuisance complaints, things of that nature, and also be kind of under the wing of, of Mike Tatro to learn the job, because he doesn't want to do this forever, but he's willing to help us. I haven't got a name yet that I want to advance for this, but that's what the plan is so far. So, hopefully, when we get done, we'll have enough, we should have enough to, have quite a bit of money left in that budget to pay for training and courses and stuff like that. So, that's just enough. So, will we send the temporary guy to classes too? Uh, probably. It depends on who we get and what they want to do, and, you know, I'll have to interview some people and talk to them about it, and then see what they want to do. But it will be within the budgeted amount for sure. Okay. Northern tier recreational trail maintenance. Okay, that was, that- That was a request by Chairman McManus of the Clinton County Legislature, and he's asking for potential repairs, or he was asking, for potential repairs to set up an account to $5,000 should a grant being requested by Assemblyman Jones not be obtained. I have conveyed my thoughts that the village couldn't establish a slush fund to be administered by another governing body for work that may not occur in the Village of Rousas Point. I think apparently last year, something washed away from the brand-new trail over by the school somewhere, and the county went and fixed it because it hadn't been turned over to the town yet, and he wants to prevent that from happening in the future, establish something as a, I don't think that we can really do that. We're going to maintain the parts of the trail that, that go through the Village of Rousas Point, and if something comes up in the town, they can approach us on that and see, we'll decide at that time if something does happen in the future and what our participation will be. But I don't see any time, any point at this time of establishing some kind of a fund in case something goes wrong with it. All right. I'd like to request an executive session to discuss some contractual provisions in the union contract. Need a second?
Second.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I would like to, at this time, appoint Trustee Menard to be co-chairman of Recreation Department to fill the slot vacated by Trustee Dard, and he's agreed to do that, so it's kind of an announcement. Trustee Arnold?
One thing I have is, I got a letter from the water plant operator. I have assembled quotes for the PE needs. Result has followed below. I requested a quote for 1,000 bags of PE. None of the responders quoted onto that level. Marcel's associates quote $738 a ton delivered. Slack Chemical quoted $844.22 a ton with a $90 fuel charge and truckload. Aftech quoted $628 a ton delivered, and Pearson Chemical quoted $873.20 per delivery. Is my intention to order from Aftech, who quoted valve price for 800, or 828 bags of PE. This is a total of $12,999.60 of the, the amount of our budget. Brian, gentlemen.
It is within the amount?
Yep.
And does that, will that carry us through the rest of the year?
828 bags?
Well, I don't know. They just burned through that whole liability right now. Mr. Belkey?
Yes, that should last until next year.
Next year?
Yep. So, you ordered 1,000 bags, but the best one was 828 bags.
Well, they're, they're giving it by the ton, right?
Yep.
That's where they're quoting the price, because they don't, the bags could be different sizes from different vendors.
Yeah, more than a pound or 50 pounds, whatever.
All right, so what did he recommend? The low bid would meet his specifications?
Yes. Yeah, the, from Altech, or Al, Aftech.
Okay, we don't normally do-
Of $628 a ton delivered.
So, we don't normally do this because it's a budgeted item, but we can, you can make a motion if you want to accept that bid.
Yep. I make a motion that we accept this lowest bid.
Second.
Home in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the other, the only other thing I have is, we have a mutual aid call. Like Champlain comes to Rousas Point. Now, are their fire trucks covered under our insurance if they wreck them? No, everybody covers their own, I believe.
No, 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 that's-
You sure?
Well, but Chief LeBlanc says that the, the fire, or if the fires in Rousas Point, we ask for assistance from Champlain, Albert, or whoever they're supposed to cover. The contract said that we're supposed to cover their accident.
First, I've never heard of that. I'll ask the administrator to look into that tomorrow.
I know, because I was talking to one of the commissioners in Champlain, and he said, "When you go to Canada, the only one that covers us right now in Canada is St. Paul." So, if we go to St. Paul and we wreck a truck on the way, they cover our expenses. But Havenford is trying to get it, but they can't get it yet for some reason or in the hole.
I've never noticed that on any of the, on any of the insurance policy requests that the fire departments ask for at the budget time. You know, they don't have like a separate insurance item for that.
Yep.
And I never heard of it. I mean, we can look into it.
Mr. Peters asked Mr. LeBlanc about it and stuff like that.
Separate our insurance carrier.
Yeah, separate our insurance.
I got a meeting with, with the chief on Wednesday, so I'll see if I can bring it up then if I remember.
Okay.
I have one other item that you reminded me of. The last meeting, Trustee Arnold received a quote for line striping with yellow traffic paint in front of the building and right side of walkway, and one row of back-to-back parking spaces. That's the parking lot in this parking lot here.
Right.
It was $230. And what we were hoping to do, I guess, was that if we put up a row or two of-
Parking places.
Designated parking spaces, that the rest of the parking lot, we're kind of filling behind them and maybe have a little less chaos in the parking lot this winter. We don't want to paint the whole parking lot because we're going to resurface it in, I think, two years, I believe, is when it's up for being resurfaced.
Well, it's too late now to do it.
Well, they can't do it? We just got this six days ago or something.
Yep. Well, they're going to Florida Monday.
Oh, well, next Monday.
When is, Benny, do you know when Sue and Jimmy Schindler are going to Florida?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it's next Monday, eh? Yeah.
Well, we got time this week to do it?
Oh, we probably do. I don't know. I'll see them.
I mean, it's providing it stops raining.
Well, that's the thing, you can't, yeah. And it's got to be at least 55 degrees.
Yeah. It's right in the bullet. We didn't, we didn't get this until like a few days ago, so. Anyway, the amount was $230. How does the board feel about doing this? Do you want to do it or not do it?
They can do it.
Well, let's just, well, first we'll approve it, and then ask Benny to approach them, and if they can do it, they can. Okay, so, home in favor of $230 for striking in the parking lot?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Benny, could you get back to them? If they can do it, they can do it, and if they can't do it, they can't do it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Anything else?
No. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Trustee Dard?
Thank you. I've got a couple items to talk about tonight. One about, one is the fall conference that Ron, Trustee LeBlanc, and I attended in Pottstown last week. We both attend a session on duties and responsibilities of governing board. Ron and I attended the community development success stories session. I was a bit disappointed with that session as it focused on three businesses and, and what they are all about, and not necessarily about the success story on how they got there, but it was still an interesting session. Then in the afternoon, Ron attended the session on community development and poverty, and I attended the session on reserve funds. Picked up some interesting pointers. State Controller's Office stated amongst other things that village and town boards generally do what they call cursor area, or casual, or token, or sometimes take a hasty look or action at most of the accounting budgets and processes. They strongly advise that trustees do a line-by-line itemization when it comes to budget time. This is something I'm very much in favor of before we approve our yearly budgets. They also cautioned, and they, they stated they, they would be critical of any surplus accounts that are more than 19%. I don't know if we have any surplus accounts in that area, but I just wanted to bring that forward. They strongly advise that the board watch the monthly, quarterly, and semi-annual budget accounts, whichever these things, these accounts that are done by our side given to us instead of just filed away and whatever. We really look them over. We know that boards traditionally don't always review and accept what the information is excited to be provided, because it's just brought forward by the treasurer. They are recommending something new out there, is a monthly, a quarterly general cash flow statements for the general fund to keep the costs lower. The village could have the same accounting firm as the Village of Champlain has, since we're on the same, I believe we're on the same budget schedule, where we're not on the same budget schedule with the town. It might make it easier for us also. And if we don't already do so, the state recommends that we do a yearly resolution to verify all reserve accounts, and they're saying this is because we might get lost in what we have for reserve accounts, and what maybe has been sitting there for years, and maybe we need to revamp those things. But that's it. Those are all advisory, and those are all good topics to hear of. My second item is reserve funding for heavy equipment. I've noticed in the last three years that I've been here as a trustee, we don't have any reserve funding for heavy equipment over five tons, as to speak. I think I'm wording that correctly. We've got reserve funding for our one-ton truck, sweeper, backhoe, and, and other items may be covered by that, but we have three large dump trucks. We have an international dump truck that's primarily used for road plowing, and it's used for other items and various hauling of materials in other times of the year. Second one we have is a GMC that is used daily as a job site equipment hauler. It's, it's a truck that has the low mesh size, and it's utilized year-round. A third piece of equipment is a five-ton dump truck that's only used sporadically, and perhaps it will be replaced when it dies, but we do do repairs from time to times on this truck. The last item we have, and I don't know what this thing weighs, but it's a very large case front-end loader. This loader is used year-round for various activities in snow removal and street rebuilding, and for handling our sand and salt and our different piles of materials behind our Public Works buildings. And so, the two trucks in this case front-end loader, I've got a rough estimate that we're talking over $300,000 for the equipment. We don't have any kind of reserve funding. I'm not saying that, you know, anything's going to drop dead on these tomorrow, because we do a very good job of maintaining our equipment, but if something comes up with one of these pieces of equipment that's $30,000 or $40,000 to repair it, or we, or we forecast that coming, if we didn't, if we had a reserve account, you know, we can think about trading a piece of equipment or selling it as is the way it was, but right now, we have no, we have no fallback for this, and we're talking over $400,000. So, just as an advisory, I just wanted to bring that up, and if we did have a reserve funding account, I spoke with the state auditor on this, and I also spoke with our treasurer, our side, and board would have to establish what's called a type reserve and not a specific reserve account to cover the future replacement of this equipment, and it could be simply labeled heavy equipment over five tons. I'm going to meet with Brian Belkey, our Public Works Supervisor at some point, to discuss the remaining life expectancy of this equipment, and then, come budget time next year, recommend to the board a dollar amount, if they, if we want to stock this account, a minimum dollar amount to be added each year to preserve this reserve fund. And the other thing I've got is that request for an executive session with just mayor and board. And thank you.
We do have reserve funds for those vehicles. The reason that there's not any in them now, or some of them, is because they've all been replaced in the last couple of years. I think we, we just bought a hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar front-end loader this summer, the backhoe.
Backhoe, that's under its own account.
I know, and we bought that manatei thing for the sewer department.
Which is under sewer account.
And we bought the, the snow plow was a couple of years ago, maybe eight or nine years, huh? But we-
Eighteen years.
Every piece of equipment that we bought in this building-
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years. Is it that long a while?
Well, it's pretty close.
Of course, that's a vehicle that's used four months a year or two.
Oh, they use it in the summertime, too.
Not very much. I don't think they put 100, 200 miles on it in the summer unless they're drawing asphalt or something, because it doesn't hold anything. But every piece of equipment that we've bought has been paid cash for. We haven't borrowed money for any of this stuff. So, we do have money in there. It just gets switched around like sometimes the electric department will fund part of a vehicle, and the streets will fund part of it, and, you know, Public Works will fund part of it. We can go over that and make sure that, you know, we work on a budget this winter, and we'll make sure that those funds are, those are reestablished with an eye to what's going to be replaced next, but we're in very good shape for equipment right now.
Yep.
Okay, Trustee Menard?
The only thing I have, I just want to follow up the press release. The fall cleanup days for the village will start on Monday, October 22nd, and will continue through Friday, October 26th. So, everybody can put their stuff out by the curb, and that's all I have.
What, what kind of stuff can you put out? Like, not just trees, right?
Well, branches, leaves, you know.
Oh, oh, not like I see pouches and stuff.
No, no, not garbage.
Not garbage, no.
Yeah, that's right.
Fall cleanup is leaves, leaves.
Yeah, but a garden can take those things away, either.
Your garden, no. Accessories and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Something flower-planting.
It has to be biodegradable stuff.
Okay, because I have seen things out, and I thought, gee, I wonder, you know, if you can talk about pesticides and stuff. But I have seen them on the side.
Yeah, there's a lot of that.
Yeah.
And that's all I have for the scene.
They don't have that kind of pickup around here, though.
No, they don't.
No.
I have to go put it in shampoo and airbox, or-
Good idea. Get it out of the garage.
Yeah.
Okay, Trustee LeBlanc?
Yes, I would very like to read a prepared statement. I'll take any questions or-
Yes, I would very like to have read a prepared statement. I'll take any questions or, um, I'll follow.
Don, we'll give you a copy of this, so you can-
Thank you.
Do you have a copy?
No.
I'll make sure she gets it.
I'll get it. I'll get this copy. As most people know, the upstate region of New York is in, is in decline, and has been for many years. Populations are decreasing along with economic opportunities. This is true in our own community of Rouse's Point, along with most of our neighbors. The village has been cognizant of this fact and has made a number of efforts to support our business infrastructure. Some benefits have emerged from these efforts, but not enough to slow down our decline. Our downtown is a shell of what it once was. Simple things like buying groceries requires an out-of-town trip. During my short tenure as a trustee, I've made an effort to find new ways to generate economic activity and revitalize the village of Rouse's Point. I have met with many other municipal officials who face similar problems. Many of them are making good efforts to turn the tide to increase prosperity. They have one common message: We need to engage members of our village to help drive us in a new and bold direction, thinking outside the box, tapping to any and all resources. Make economic development and village revitalization the top priority of village administration. I foresee only two choices: Make the efforts to save our village, or just watch the slow but inevitable decline. You have seen it happen in many other communities around us. Our problems are not going to magically be fixed. It will take dynamic actions to make a difference. To this end, I encourage the village administration to immediately evaluate options, generate resources, and recruit investors, and actually do something bold and different. Here are some ideas that I have heard. Some may be controversial, some may require the village to reallocate financial resources. All will require great effort. Create a local development company, or work with an existing entity, obtain and market usable commercial property in the village downtown, lakefront and rural eleven areas. Folks will am getting a hotel and food store in the village. For example, the village of Saranac Bay can restore a historic hotel that drives their downtown revitalization. Make an attempt to secure ownership of the oldest two buildings on the old Pfizer property. The one-story building would be the future home of village offices. A larger connecting building could be turned into incubator space for startup businesses, who would hopefully grow into larger buildings with associated jobs. This is actually now being done in a similar community not far from Rouse's Point. Right now, the old Pfizer property is producing zero jobs, and we have no known plan going forward. Build down our lakefront properties, and may be possible to cite another marina or other lakefront businesses. Make an effort to increase the population of the village to around three thousand. This gives us better sizing to support economic activity. Annex of specific parcels of land that belong to the town of Champlain that are adjacent to current village boundaries. Support affordable housing residential development on this land. Build a first-class railroad museum, both for the tourist industry and our own heritage. Finally, I would like to see concerned citizens who support a revitalization effort, volunteer to work with the planning and zoning boards on a regular schedule, to work out actual plans for development, and drive the implementation of those plans. The planning and zoning board should coordinate the schedule to provide one-stop shopping to speed up our develop, our development initiatives. That's the end of our prepared text, so I'll be glad to take any questions. I think I, uh, some others would like to comment, either for the board or from the audience.
I've been researching this, um, combining the planning and zoning boards, and it looks like we're making progress there. So I think the board is in agreement that that would be a good idea.
I think so, yeah.
Very good. It's, it's difficult to find people that want to do this in the first place, to serve on these boards. And I'd like to get it so it's like, like he says, one-stop shopping, where the developer wants to come in a year and start something. They don't have to go through a gauntlet of regulatory agencies to get permission, and by the time they're done, the season's over with.
Yep. I think that's very good.
Any other comments on this?
Just, just as Ron had noted, you know, the, the village has taken a proactive approach and an ongoing role in vitality in the future of this, uh, village. The administrator devotes time to economic development, but he can't do it by himself. We can't sit up here anymore and, and sit up here and say that we're going to do this by ourselves. We, we know we can't do it. The village needs a partnership with, with interested business owners and residents to reach out and to, to search ideas and funding solutions to bring these projects to fruition. Simply stating that, uh, we have to do something about the economic future of our village and do a lip service, just doesn't cut it anymore. The time is now. Giving interviews to our newspapers, stating empty or wishful promises or concerns, just doesn't cut it anymore. We have to take action.
Well, we have heard that new businesses are coming in, and they bought lots, people did, like, the coffee shop bought a lot across the street, she's going to do something, and then the flower shop bought, uh, the old pizza place, Patriot, and she's planning on making a cafe of some sort, so.
I, I think the very best approach is to realize that local people do not support the local businesses here, and you have to bring the money in from outside the community. And I, I think that the best approach is to keep that in mind, and to try to get businesses in here that will further that goal.
And we're getting a new business in the, uh, Family Dollar building, that's going to be, that's right in progress.
Winning on eleven?
Yes.
Okay, what's that going to be?
Um, I don't think I should announce it yet, because it's up to them, but it's a, it's a big-name chain that's going to be in there.
A food store, or, or you can't say, a bank?
No, I wish it was, but, uh, I think, from what I can see in the paperwork-
If anybody can come and team me up with this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can tell them off the record, but I mean, it's, uh, it looks like the paperwork is progressing along far enough that it's going to be imminent, I would say.
Right.
Okay, okay. And how about, uh, the other one there, the gas station up above?
Yeah. The salt in there, I don't know.
I, I think you'll just see that even with a couple of new businesses coming in, they're going to, they replace ones that go out. There's no increase in economic activity overall.
Right, there's no goal, there's no plan.
Exactly, so, uh, as I just announced, we're going to, we have specific ideas, we're going to just write down, pick, pick the ones we want to pursue and go with those.
Like a food store would be nice.
It would be, it's a place to go.
Save a lot, that is wonderful, wonderful.
Right, but, uh-
You know, that, we lost that to skulldungery.
Yes, yes, I don't get that, yeah.
We got a weekly reading coming. Yeah.
Anyways, I just want, I just want to finish this up, because I'll have a proposal. As has been in the past, that trustees will sit up there and don't do anything about economic development, and we're only fooling themselves. We all need to be proactive in the, in the role and the power we take in this, and the mayors have to be also. So what I'm proposing is a five-person committee made up of two trustees, two business owners, and one resident to meet regularly as a think-tank for development. I'd like the mayor to bless this new venture and have it chaired and co-chairs like other departments, assignments the trustees currently have now. In the future years, the mayor can ask or choose trustees who are interested in the co-chair, chair position. With time being in for the next eighteen months, at least while, uh, I'm in this term of office, I propose that trustee LeBlanc, LeBlanc will be the chair, and I will be the co-chair of this committee. And, Conny, that will be part of the plan to kick things off, the ideas that you just said. And we can get this off the ground and, and running with everyone's support. Thank you.
If you want to put that in the form of a written thing and give it to me, and I'll bring it up at the next meeting, make a decision on what to do with it?
Yeah, thank you.
And, you know, duration and sculpting and all that kind of stuff, so.
Right.
And see if anybody else in the board is interested in it. So, okay. Other reports. Go, let's see, just, administrator Peters.
Uh, as you can see, the rec center's opening, uh, tomorrow. They got all the paint down. Delayed by a couple of days just for the seventy-degree days we had last week. Uh, you just can't make ice quick enough when it's that warm. So, uh, but that's been obviously, most, you know, somewhat of an adventure, but also, uh, also a good thing for our staff to kind of get used to understanding the process of, of putting ice down. Uh, special thanks, uh, to Mike Lemieux for volunteering his time to come back and really, he's the guy that's really helped make this happen, so that's much appreciated for sure. I did meet with, uh, two representatives of the Empire State Trail. Uh, one from Alta Planning and Design, they have the, the design contract through New York State, to design the entire trail. Uh, this is a trail that goes from here, Rouse's Point, down to Manhattan, and from Albany to Buffalo. It's the cycling trail that Governor Cuomo announced a couple of years ago. And, uh, I was hoping to have some illustrations for you. Uh, I had asked for them before today's meeting. I did get them before today's meeting. It was at six fifty-nine that I received them. While I was sitting here, I, the email came in, so I, I will forward those to you as soon as I can, so you see what, uh, potential they're looking at. Um, and I can, uh, I'll, I'll send out some information for you all to take a look at and offer your opinions on, um, where and how we might locate this, uh, this trailhead, which is what they're planning to install. So, uh, it's going to consist of somewhere between forty and fifty thousand dollars worth of investment, at no cost to the village, uh, streetscape, uh, very, very low maintenance is what they're claiming, uh, if any, lots of stonework, bike racks, kiosk with maps. Um, I've asked for it to be bilingual, they've accommodated. And we'll also acknowledge our Northern Tail Recreation Trail as well on there. Um, and one of the other things they would like is some, uh, and, and I think trustee Arno, I might have to chat with you, they want some, uh, a lot of historical information, because one of the things they're planning is an app for people to download, so that while they're riding, uh, unique historical facts will kind of pop up as they ride through different communities, um, and point them in the direction of different sites and things like that, so. Um, all pretty exciting. Um, and right now for us, I think the issue is not if we were to get something like this, it would be where we'd put it. And, uh, we've got a couple of great options, and so I'll get those out to you for your consideration this week.
Okay, thank you. How's Brian doing tonight?
Good. I'm the mayor.
What did we do this week?
This week?
Or last week?
Last week. The boat launch is completely repaired. It was in tough shape, as you people know. It has a lot of complaints.
A lot of people in the village would like to thank everybody that participated in that.
It was a, it was a major rehab job, and we got it done. And, uh, if you've been up Chapman Street, we've worked with the railroad for a day, and we took care of that crossing, that rough crossing. They took out a set of tracks, we worked with them, and we got it all blended back in. So the Chapman Street crossing is possible. We have a good contact now with CP Rail, so anytime we have a problem, just a phone call away. Um, a lot of guys are going for training this week. They had snowplow training today in Plasberg, you've seen it on the news tonight. We had three of our guys go today. Wednesday, they have water class, so. I think there's like, uh, seven guys going to water class on Wednesday. A lot of training coming up this time of year. We're working on our snowplow equipment and, uh, working on our Smith Street project. We have the fall pickup, like trustee Menard announced, coming up Monday. We might start a little bit ahead, just to get a few of the, because there's so much down there.
Work is still continuing on Smith Street?
Yes. We have, uh, there's a lot of frosties on Smith Street. When they backfilled years ago and they put the storm drains in, they used all pure stone, and it does not blend well with the common fill that's there, so we take out the stone, we put common fill back, and we put the exact same thickness of stone for the roadbed that's required. And you don't get all these frosties come winter, because everything goes together, rather than working against each other. So, we have a lot of good comments from the people on Smith Street that we're making progress up there. Looks good.
Okay, and I, I think we probably should get the bids proposals ready for the sidewalk plow for next meeting, possibly?
Yes, I called today, and, um, we have a general, I'm looking at two different pieces of equipment and getting specs from each one, trying to, you know, mesh them together, and so we can go out to bid, so more than one person can bid on these.
That's our last major equipment purchase this year, which is fully funded, as were the last three pieces we bought this summer.
We will have those specs to the board by the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I got one question, Mr. Pocky. Did, did you get a chance to call Altech about our fire alarm system here?
I'm, I'm working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's it. Okay, yeah, we toured this place, uh, with, with Mickey, the new code enforcement officer, last week. And there's a few things that I want to get done before we start the ice season, that I think need to be done right away. And then we're going to look at a comprehensive thing to hardwire and permanent smoke detectors and exit signs and all that. But we're going to do some stuff, uh, temporary that will get us through, um, until we can do more comprehensive thing. And there's a couple of, there's a couple of things that we found that have to require immediate attention. Okay, so, I'll brief you that later if you want.
Yep.
Okay, any from, one from the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to respond to a couple of statements that are made tonight. I don't want to sound, uh, er, er, serial, but, uh, I just want to remind the board again that the, uh, list of bills goes out on Friday afternoon, it's put in everybody's box. And regard to, uh, reserves, the whole statement of the estimated reserves are on page thirty-eight, thirty-nine, the budget that was adopted. They're all listed there, so you don't have to worry about losing any or anything like that, that we have nineteen reserve accounts at, at this moment. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board one last time? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to recess for the executive session.
A move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.